All right. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Al Bond. I'm the Executive Director here at the Avalon Foundation. We have hosted a number of election forums over the last year or so in partnership with The Spy and Dave Whelan. I want to thank Dave for helping to organize this and get the word out. I also want to thank Craig Fuller, who is the moderator today and right just to my left, for once again keeping the conversation moving and hopefully helping us all to be informed about our local elections. I want to thank the candidates. Every single person who runs for public office is giving of themselves to the community, and regardless of whether you like, dislike any of their positions on anything, we should all give them our respect. And I want to thank all of you who chose to come out this evening, as well as the many people who will be watching this live streaming or in recorded form later. So with that all said, we're going to get things going. I am going to say, because I have to, the Avalon Foundation is a nonpartisan organization. We don't have any endorsements of anybody. We just want to keep our public informed about what's going on, so that's why I'm here. Craig?
Well, good evening, Al. Thank you very much for kicking this off. This is a special evening about people, special people, who are seeking a very important position in our community. The School Board, the Board of Education here, is divided into districts. And to help us understand a little bit more about how this is structured, the Avalon Foundation has put together a very short video clip, which I'd like to have them run now, because I think it'll kind of keep us informed about just how this is structured. So let's go ahead and run the video clip.
Elections, both national and local, are coming up on Tuesday, November 5th. And for some in Talbot County, that includes the local Board of Education elections. At a time when there is so much focus on national elections, the local elections can be complicated and have very few online resources to help understand them. Furthermore, candidates for School Board cannot have party affiliation by Maryland law. The School Board has its own district map that does not associate with other county maps or town board maps. The School Board map divides Talbot County into seven districts. This November, the Talbot County School Board elections take place in districts two, five, and six. So you will only be voting for School Board if you live in one of these three districts. If you live in District Two, which consists approximately of the area south of Port Street and Brooklets, plus a portion of the east side of 50, including Mulberry Station, you'll be voting between Candace Henry and Ann O'Connor. If you live in District Five, which consists approximately of the southern part of Talbot County up to Peach Blossom Creek, Landing Neck, and Manadere Road, you're voting between Anna Howie and Carla Whelan Cherry. If you live in District Six, which consists approximately of the area east of St. Michael's beginning at Peenek Road up to the Y River, including all of Royal Oak and north of Eastern Point, and west of the bypass, including a portion between Washington Street and 50, you're voting between Carrie Gunnison and Cynthia Mara-Jerse. In order to prepare for your local elections, it's important to know which School Board district you're in. While the maps in this video may give you a good idea of which district you're in, you can clearly determine if there will be a Board of Education race on your ballot by visiting vote411.org and entering your address. Happy voting.
So we're not going to quiz you on that, but that gives you a little bit of a flavor for how this is broken out. I want to officially welcome Candace, Ann, Anna, and Cynthia to the stage and tell you that, yes, there are four here, there are six running. We invited all to attend with multiple dates, and we're delighted the four of you could be with us tonight for this discussion. Some of you have been at these before. This is, you know, not confrontation, this is conversation. The idea is to let you get as good a feel as you can for those seeking the office. So I thank the candidates. I also want to thank the citizens of Talbot County, the readers of The Talbot Spy, who participated, hundreds of them, in a survey over the last few days about education in the county. We actually asked a question about how satisfied you are, the respondent is, with the education K through 12 education today. It's a question that the Gallup Organization has asked for many years, and so we could kind of measure our response here versus the national audience. The national audience has actually improved in the last few years, couple of years, where 43% of the respondents are either completely satisfied or somewhat satisfied, 43%. In the Talbot Spy survey, the number was 68%. 68% are completely satisfied or somewhat satisfied. I take that as encouraging, in the sense that the community, at least those in the readership of The Talbot Spy who responded, are feeling rather positive, but that doesn't mean this isn't a complicated and challenging set of issues that are handed to the School Board. That's what we're here to talk about this evening. I'd like to start with Candace and give each of the candidates a chance to respond to the same question in this case. And, you know, it's a question of why you're doing this, kind of who you are, a little background, but why you're doing this. My experience with people who seek public office is that they genuinely believe that there are things they want to address, and then they're in a good position to address them. So share a little bit about your reasons for doing this, your priorities, and Candace, we'll start with you.
So, good evening, everyone. Again, my name is Candace Henry. So I'll start a little bit with background. I'm born and raised in Easton, educated in Talbot County Public Schools myself. I went to college in Louisiana, and I knew that I would come back home to, I would say, do my civic duty. I feel like being on the Board of Education is my way of giving back to my community, as well as my way of ensuring that we are looking at and taking care of all students. All students is my main priority. I'm invested in doing that. I have over 20, almost 25 now, I feel like I'm telling you how old I am, years of experience working with individuals with disabilities in secondary and post-secondary education. So special education is near and dear to me as well. I do a lot of work with accessibility, so I'm very interested in the accessibility of our spaces and places, psychological safety, things of that nature. So I'm running because I am born and raised in this community. My grandmother was an educator for 35 years for Talbot County Public Schools, and so I have it in my blood just to be interested in this, and so that's why.
Thanks so much. Ann is also running in the second district. Ann, what are your reasons?
With a son.
Aaron.
Well, good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming out tonight. And as I've said before, it shows that you truly care about our community and the future of it, and our students, just by showing up tonight and taking your time to come out. So thank you. A little bit about me and my background. My husband and I have lived in Talbot County for 18 years. We have six children. Our youngest is in eighth grade at Easton Middle School. We have two in high school and three in college, sophomore, junior, senior. I have been involved in education since I graduated from Syracuse University. I was a teacher, a Spanish teacher, in private school for a number of years, then I moved to public school, big rah 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 public school, so much more fun. And then I most recent taught at the collegiate level as well after that. And then I most recently ran a baby bilingual program here in Talbot County in three preschools, teaching Spanish. So I have been passionate about education and children, you know, since I've graduated from college. And I have seen a decline in the rigor just from my oldest, who's 21, to what my 13-year-old is doing in school. And I'm running because I have been talking about this ad nauseam since they were in elementary school. What can we do? What can we do better? How can we do this? How can we do this? And a couple of people asked me to run, and I said, okay, if this is what I'm supposed to be doing, I'm just going to go step by step by step, and it's just now I'm here. So I would love to advance academics, boost accountability, and cultivate character. We're going back to the ABCs as my platform.
Thank you very much. Anna, I don't want to increase the pressure, but I live in District Five, so I'm very, very interested in hearing your introduction.
Well, good evening. My name is Anna Howie, and again, thank you all for coming out tonight. So I would say I was born into this. My grandfather taught here in Talbot County Public Schools as the industrial arts teacher, and he was at Moton, as well as Easton High School. And my mother was a teacher, and if you can believe it, I was in sixth grade sitting in her English Language Arts class. And I have 22 years in public education, and my husband, he is in public education as well, and we are so proud that our daughter is now a fifth-grade teacher at an elementary school. So a little bit about my background. I've been a math teacher, I've been an instructional math coach, I've been a local accountability coordinator responsible for testing. I've been a curriculum supervisor for mathematics and career and technical education. And right now, to give myself the full scope of an experience, because I've been at a high school, I've been at a middle school, and now I'm an assistant principal in an elementary school, because it is extremely important to have someone that understands education on the board, and who knows the inner workings, who knows how central office works. And part of my why, I have, again, our daughter, who is the teacher, she graduated from Easton High School. I have a son at Easton High School, and I have a daughter also in eighth grade at Easton Middle School. And our children's education is extremely important. And one of the things that I love, and I said it before, I love math. I want to see an increase in our math scores. I want to continue to look at our data, to continue to improve what we already have, because the school system that we have is great, and they care about our kids, and they're consistently looking at how can we improve, what can we do better? And I want to be a part of ensuring that every single child that is a part of our school system has the best education and can go on to be a lifelong productive citizen.
Thank you very much. Cynthia?
Hello, everyone. Thank you so much for coming out here tonight. Thank you for caring about our public schools. My why, excellent public schools are, I believe, the essential foundation of a thriving community. Anywhere we go, whether you're going into your doctor's office, your lawyer's office, your accountant, your mechanic, your plumber, the grocery store, the library, you will be surrounded by the graduates of our public schools. I heard recently, when I was at the budget hearing for the School Board at the county council, I heard one of our local doctors testifying how the caliber of our schools mattered so much for their being able to recruit primary care physicians. So there's so many aspects of our lives that the caliber of our schools really matters. And ultimately, it's all about the kids, providing for them an effective, safe, inclusive, and positive learning environment. The other piece for me is why now? Why now? I wanted to see, I've seen things going on around the country, and I want to ensure that our Talbot County Public School Board continues to function effectively. I've seen some of the polarization and division that has happened in other communities around the School Board. And when I tell you a little bit about my background, you'll understand why I see this as particularly important. I've seen, and at first I thought, is this really happening in Talbot County? But then we've seen the attacks that we've seen on our School Board with some of the mailers that we've seen recently on our schools and on our teachers. I believe that by working together, we can meet any challenge. We know we do have some challenges, but by working together, by having collaborative problem solving, by listening to all voices, I think that is the way to solve problems. My background, my background is as a lawyer, but over the last couple of decades, as a mediator. So that is what I do. I work with people to bring out solutions, to hear all perspectives, because we find that when people are able to do that, they are able to come up with solutions that are better than anyone walked into the room thinking was possible. So I believe that to my core. In addition to that, I have been the director of Youth and Family Services for Midshore Community Mediation, and then the Executive Director, where we launched innovative school-based partnerships, so addressing issues like school discipline and fights, helping students to really resolve what it is that is going on between them. That blossomed into attendance mediation and training for teachers and students in various aspects of conflict resolution. I've lived in the community for over 27 years, I've been on various boards and councils relating to youth-related matters, and our three sons are graduates of Talbot County Public Schools. Talking about priorities, I see our student mastery of essential knowledge and skills, recruiting, retaining, and supporting excellent teachers, and fostering family and student engagement. I think we have a lot of strengths to build on here in our Talbot County Public Schools. I think we have challenges, but we also have some positive momentum. So I'd like to help us foster that, continue to foster vibrant and excellent public schools for our kids and for our community.
Thank you very much. I think we can all agree, excellent points of view, all four of you. There's a lot of ground to cover. I'd like to start with teachers. And Anna, maybe I'll start with you. Are we successful, and what do we need to do to be more successful in recruiting the kinds of teachers we need here in Talbot County?
Well, I always start with, you want to find people that are caring and that understand children. I think that right now, and we've been a part of conversations, our new Assistant Superintendent for Administration, who's over HR, has a new innovative plan on reaching out to different colleges when it comes to recruiting. And to also really understand why people stay, right? We need to really understand, are they connected to the community? Do they have children? Are they raising their children here? So I think getting them tied into the community, so where they feel a sense of ownership, is extremely important in the retention aspect of it, because we can recruit. Our schools are full, but it's retaining, because retaining teachers ensures that our kids learn, that our kids have progressively, the teachers, as they are improving, our kids' instruction are improving. And I guess the real part of it, just really recruiting, getting out there and being innovative, going to different colleges, and really broadening, and recruiting from colleges where those teachers have experiences similar to the schools that we have here. I think sometimes a lot of people get shocked if they do their student teaching somewhere else, and then they come into our school system, and they're like, oh, this is a little bit different. But also, our teacher mentor program, I think that's really important for ensuring that our teachers stay, because if teachers feel supported and they feel success, then they're going to stay. And again, getting them connected to the community.
Candace, you've been on the front line. How do you feel about recruiting teachers?
So similarly, like, so I definitely feel like the recruiting plan that we're currently working from is doing, I think we'll do, do a really good job of recruiting. I also feel like retention is a big piece. We have to address why we don't keep the teachers, why they're not staying. Connections to the community is great, but I also go back to, again, the reason why I'm specifically running. We have a Grow Your Own program, and I am very much a cheerleader for our Grow Your Own program. We should be growing teachers from our own communities that can come back and teach in our communities. So while I feel like we need to kind of spread our wings and, you know, look in places and spaces where we haven't, we have a lot of teachers that teaching is their second career. So I think we can be more innovative in the strategies that we use to recruit teachers. But I think we need to work, and continue to work with our community partners, to incentivize teaching in our county, providing tax breaks or whatever that might look like, in order to get teachers to come here, stay here, and be invested in our community. That should be a top priority.
You know, Ann, it sounds like, given the kids you have in school, I'll come back to you in just a minute, you've had the interaction with teachers, and I'm just wondering how that experience has gone. You know, from a parent's point of view, what's the, how do you judge the quality of the teachers here, the kind of people we're able to recruit?
Oh, thank you. Yeah, I feel like that's a big part of why I'm running, is I've had many, 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 many friends, teachers, relationships, and conversations over the years. That's, what, 15 years in school they've been in? So I always say, for, actually, I've spoken to one of the principals, and her main problem, I thought was going to be discipline in the school, and she said staffing. So we aren't fully staffed till, still, until this day. So that is a big problem in the high school, at least, I know for a fact. Now, retaining teachers, I say, why don't we ask the teachers that left? Why did you leave? And, I mean, and this has been going on for years. I mean, it seems like every time we've had a great teacher, they're gone, or they move to another school, they move to a private school, they move to a different county. Why? And it's been, I mean, okay, I have a couple of things to say. One is, they've put forth their whole body and soul into the program, into the school, with a promise that, yes, you'll get what you want next year when you do this for us next year. No, can't have that. And so they moved to the country school, and it was like, they said, a breath of fresh air. So I just feel like we need to give our teachers what they need. They are the ones in the classroom. We need to ask them, what do you need? What do you see? And give them the power. They are professionals, they have master's degrees, they have to retain their certification every so often, so when, you know, their opinions matter. So I am a huge proponent of teachers and what they need. And one thing was, I mean, I did ask other, some teachers, I said, well, what, you know, why did you leave? And pay was one, if they can get more pay in the next county and maybe fewer responsibilities, that, actually, I was surprised with the pay, because you don't go into teaching because you want pay, but they need to. A lot of them have second jobs, you know, that's, I just think that's horrible. Student discipline was another one. When I asked another teacher, she said, in quote, "Student behavior and discipline, there is none." So we, you know, that's not all across the board, but we need to focus on discipline, a huge thing, lack of support of the teacher. And I mean in the discipline area, you know, when they, when the kids come in, headphones, take your headphones off. You can't tell me what to do. That should not go on, that should not go on. That should be nipped in the bud right away. There needs to be a policy for that. End of story.
Can I, I want to pick up on that a little bit, and I'll come back to Anna, but I want to go to Cynthia first, because you talked about working with teachers on mediation, and so it causes me to wonder, a number of questions were asked in our survey in Talbot County about discipline and behavior, and how, do teachers have the tools they need? How do we improve their ability to manage the activities in and around the classroom that are not just related to sort of academic learning?
Yeah, and that, I think that is a challenging area right now, and, you know, I think we have to look at, students, students right now are different, you know? They have, they have different challenges in their lives. There's social media, there are mental health issues, they've just been through COVID. We know that there are a variety of challenges that students are having. We know there are a variety of challenges that parents are having. And so one of the areas that I've worked in in the past, I was referring earlier to the innovative school-based partnerships, and these were in a situation where one school district had a very high rate of suspension and expulsion. And they found that that wasn't solving the problem. You know, when a child has been disruptive, or they've gotten into a fight with another student, and they're suspended, say, for 10 days, well, now they come back into the classroom, they have, during that 10 days, they may have actually suffered additional harm, but they have not, they have not been accountable for what their deal, what the situation is, and the problem has not been solved. They've just now missed 10 days of school and are behind, and are all the more likely to be disruptive. So in the mediation program, when two students have had a fight, it's not to say there's never suspension or other measures, but when two students have had a fight or a never suspension or, or other measures, but when two students have had a fight or having a difficulty, they have a place that they can go. We called it the Peace Team, where they can come in and have a mediation and get to the root of the problem. Um, when students have, have, say, caused an incident, there's also something called restorative practices. So there can be restorative circles in a classroom where uh students are held, actually held accountable. You know, how, what happened? Uh, what were you thinking at the time? How can it be made right? So the student is actually taking responsibility for the actions that they have caused. And so there's some learning that's coming forth from it, rather than uh being given a ten-day vacation. So those are a couple of examples. Similarly, attendance. Attendance is an issue right now all across the country. And we did an attendance mediation program. So this is where, you know, an attendance can land up in the courts, you know, where a parent is brought into court and um is, is, it's dealt with there. But if it can be addressed as a positive problem-solving um process, you can have a parent or a family member, you can ask for there to be a school representative, and in some cases, a student, depending on their age. And it's amazing to see, when people have a collaborative conversation, what they can come up with. You know, it may be that mom has to get to her job at Walmart at seven AM, and the eighth grader is um seeing her younger siblings off to the bus and then doesn't get on her bus. And then you have a situation where that teacher may say, you know, I'm here, I'm here at, at, at seven, or I'm here earlier, would you want to drop her off early to my classroom? It's just incredible to see the power of people having a positive, non-adversarial conversation to solve problems. So those are just a few of the examples. I know here in Talbot, they have been working on a program called Conscious Discipline, um, where they have been talking about that relationship base. You know, how do you start with that? Start with the relationship and then grow from there. And they've also been doing, doing restorative practices training, I think some of the same training that I took years ago. And it was interesting to hear one board member say, you know, I wasn't so sure about that. I'd heard about that, that word, and I wasn't so sure about that. But now I've been hearing my grandson come home and say, it's working. So that, I, I love that open-mindedness, you know, to say, hmm, I've heard about this, not so sure, but willing to see it work. So that's just a few, few examples.
Anna, did you want to dive back into this topic? I'm, I'm going to stick with you on something else.
Actually, if I could make a, a couple of points about what everyone has said, just to reiterate, one, I want to talk about restorative.
You must be a very good teacher.
Um, to talk about the restorative approaches, just this week, we had a conflict with um fifth graders. And they used the restorative approach. And they were able to come down, they were able to talk it out, and everything went so much smoother after that. So I can definitely say, I've seen it work, it does work, if the willing participants, they come to the table willing and ready to resolve the conflict. Also, I wanted to um piggyback on the Grow Your Own. One of the amazing things Talbot County has in our career and technical education programs, we have TAM, we have Teacher Academy of Maryland, and all of our students have the opportunity to participate in this program if they're interested in the area of teaching. And they um come out of this with college credits, and they also usually come out with a certification where they can work as instructional assistants. Um, and also, I know with the LEEDs grant that we just had, it's given the opportunities for our instructional assistants, because as we know people in the community, we know instructional assistants can pretty much come in and they can teach the class, they can pick up right where the teacher is left off. And when we see this talent, we want to be able to recognize it, encourage them. And we do have many instructional assistants that do go back and finish their education because their desire is to become um a teacher. And then going back to the retaining piece, one of the pieces that was shared with us is that we're going to start looking at intent forms early, and that's when everyone in the district says, hey, I want to stay, or hey, I want to leave, and why? And being very intentional and having those conversations early to say, hey, well, what can we do to keep you? Instead of getting that intent form at the end of the year and just start tallying up, oh, we have to hire this number of people for these positions. But really to understand why people are leaving, and then can we intervene and can we do something to prevent that? Because we do want to retain our quality teachers.
Can I just add one thing?
Go.
So to piggyback even off of that piece, um, in addition to, you know, all of our staff has the opportunity to complete an exit interview, so they can express why they may be leaving the area. And so we have looked at that data to try to use that to, again, increase our retention strategies. But we're also communicating and ongoing, I would say, working ongoing with the teachers that we do have. Why are you staying? So not only do we want to assess why people might be going, but we also want to set, assess what experiences have our teachers had and why they want to be in Talbot County, because we want to continue to do those things.
So I want to bore down on some issues a little bit, because it's all been, been very positive and very informative. Candace, I'll stick with you. It's pretty clear from what I'm reading that a number of people feel that there's gaps in performance or achievement. Math, um, reading, English is mentioned. How are we doing here in Tal, in Talbot County? And if you think there's a problem with the, the scores, uh, what can we do to, to improve and enhance the, the performance of our students?
So our scores are not what we want, none of us. Like, we, we're definitely not at a place where we are, like, we are satisfied with our scores, or we feel like our, our scores are, are good. Um, but I think, just to take another kind of step back and out, you know, standardized testing um is a snapshot in a period of time. And so Dr. Pepe Kahi has worked with her team to really be intentional about gathering data from students on a more consistent basis so that we can see what we need. Um, we have doubled the amount of math coaches that we have um in elementary, training um our educators in that area. So I think that while we know that it's a challenge, it takes time. Like, the gap didn't occur overnight, right? And so we're, we know that it's going to take time to get where we want to go. There's goals. We are continuously asking for where we are with things, where are we going, what are we going to do differently? And so I think we've taken the approach of evaluating our curriculum, um, to see what we need to do there. Of course, as a board member, we are voting on budget, and so we're not just looking for the cheapest option, we're looking for the best-fit option when it comes to curriculum for our teachers and our students. And so we're trying to measure up against the other counties and the state, and I would even say across the country, what are they doing? How can we align ourselves to make sure that we're doing that? That's where the concept of math coaches and things of that nature came into play, um, offering more support in classrooms when necessary. So I think that we have, we're on the right track. I think that we're doing some of the things. I'm certainly open to looking at other ways we can improve our scores. They are moving. Um, our ELA, we, we had a period of time where we were focused on the science of learning. Um, our elementary school teachers focused on that, were trained in that area. As a result, we saw improvement in our scores in that area. And so consistent improvement is the name of the game. We want to implement strategy, supports, and funding to go behind our students and our teachers, so that we can see continuous improvement in all of those areas.
Thanks. And I gather that one of the reasons you're in this is you're concerned about this score and performance issue as well.
Right, absolutely. So these flyers that came out are pretty alarming. And I don't look at them as a um negative on teachers. I look, teachers don't want this, teachers don't want these scores. The system is broken. And I think these are, like, let's, what is the truth? Like, what do we have here? Are, are math seventeen percent proficient? And proficient is like the base of the base, okay? That's, that's not great. And reading, um, fifty-five percent? So half are not proficient in reading? You know, that's, yeah, so that is why I'm here. So I, I feel there is a lack of foundation, you know, starting in the early years. You know, why are, why, where's, then that leads to gaps later on. So, and it's not a, you know, a one-and-done, let's fix this right away, absolutely. So this, you know, I feel like, one, let's, can we do better? One percent every day? Can we get better one percent? So by the end of the year, you're a hundred and eighty percent better. You know, but why? Why are these scores low? And it is a, it is a na- national problem. Over, nationally, students are forty-four percent proficient in reading, nationally. I mean, that's crazy. And it's lower in the subgroups. Um, I, I feel like, let's not go national, let's just focus on locally, what we can do locally. I just, I think enhancing meaningful homework, homework has gone by the wayside. My, my eighth grader has no homework. I'm like, you're, you're in advanced math, where's your homework? He should, and he could be lying, but, um, but any, before that, you know, homework, you know, learning your spelling words, vocabulary words, if you're learning a language, Spanish, like, shouldn't you be having meaningful homework every day? So I think that's kind of a deficiency. I think implementing mandatory summer reading, why don't we have mandatory summer reading? Why don't we have, you know, mandatory math skills for summer, summer? I mean, the, the private schools do it. Why, why don't we look at some, what are these other private schools doing? Talbot County is an amazing county, where people want to come to raise their kids. Shouldn't we be bragging about our school system? Why are we so low?
Very clear. Cynthia, you've, you've got the same mailers there. I don't want to, I'm not, I don't want to fact-check Ann, because she, she just referred to this. I would like to fact-check these. I mean, in your experience, or Anna, in your experience, or, is the information in there consistent with what you're seeing in Talbot County schools? Either one, or both?
I guess I'll come at it from two different ways, and maybe, Anna, I, I agree, I fundamentally absolutely agree that we need to bring up our academic skills. Absolutely agree with that point. The piece I was making was, was about the attack piece. You know, the, what are, what are our teachers teaching our kids? There's radical indoctrination. That, that was the piece I was addressing, that, that this destructive polarization isn't helpful. And whoever is behind it, um, love to see them contribute in a positive way. And I think if we all work together, um, we can do some amazing things to increase our schools' uh test scores, as well as their actual proficiency.
So I agree completely with your point, that it's not helpful, but my question goes to, do you think it's consistent with what we're seeing in the Talbot County schools today?
Well, it depends on what, what part, you know? I, I think as to the statistics, um, you might be better able to address that. The statistics, I'm not, I'm not here to debate the statistics. As to whether our teachers are indoctrinating our children, I, I don't, I do not believe so. I, my husband's a teacher in the, um, in the Easton Middle School. Our teachers are made up of people of all kinds of political backgrounds in this, in this community. I don't see any effort to indoctrinate our children with a particular point of view. And so that, that was what was sad to me, was the, just the very weekend before they're ready to go back to school, um, here comes these flyers of what are our teachers teaching our kids?
Anna, do you have a point of view on this?
Well, what I would like to speak to, um, one, my daughter, Tegan, is in Algebra One in eighth grade, and we talk about math problems every night, because we're either practicing problems.
As is my son, Trey.
We practice problems, we were just solving um, uh, absolute value inequality homework problems, and we were going through that. And she also had the opportunity to participate in a summer math cap, camp, understanding that, you know, we need to get kids ready for the upcoming school year. So she was able to participate that, um, this summer. What I want to say is, I agree, like, when we are looking at our data, we want to see growth. And what we just saw, we did see growth in our third-grade mathematics scores. Now, we did see some trends, but overall, we also saw growth in all of our student subgroups, which is huge when you think about every single subgroup that's broken down by race, broken down by special ed students, um, our EL students. So I felt very positive and like, okay, we're on a trend. Then what made me feel really good this year, with the amount of new resources and the professional development that our teachers are training. So nobody is saying, oh, you know what, we're just going to keep doing the same thing, right? Because that's the definition of insanity, keep doing the same thing and expecting different results. So they are doing something different. We looked at different math resources, um, there is a grant, so we were able to purchase curriculum resources, our teachers were able to receive professional development. And with that, we're going to continue seeing growth. We also have math testing, which allows us to see where are our kids? And then the intervention is specifically designed to strengthen the students in the areas where they need help. So it's not a one, it's not a one-size, oh, we're all going to practice this, or we're all going to practice this. It's tailored to what the students need. And if we keep approaching this from a growth mindset, then we are going to see growth in our scores, and we're going to see growth in our kids' ability to read, um, just the critical thinking aspect that they need to succeed.
So, Anna, I want to stay with you, but let everybody comment on this. You've all referred a little bit, one way or another, to the need for resources to do some of these things. And as you all know very well, um, talk about collaboration, there's a collaboration with the county council, because the money comes from the county council. I think almost half of the money taxpayers pay to the county goes to, to education. But those resources are finite. And so I, I guess I'd like, from a teacher's standpoint, maybe, Anna, first, with you, are, are the resources adequate? Is the relationship with the council constructive? Are you going to be able to get the resources you need to do some of the things you're talking about?
Well, with that, I will say, the curriculum resources that were purchased, very grateful that we had grant money coming from the state to be able to pay for those resources. So we weren't pulling from um a different place of the budget and, and depleting that. But I think the county council has been very supportive of, and, and we even toured through a school, so it's not just us going with the superintendent to view our classrooms, but our, um, our county council came with us also, and they were able to see what the kids were doing. And I think that was very helpful during the budget conversations um that we had. And we were able to get the resources that we needed. I mean, our budget, what Dr. Pepe Kahi had planned out in the budget along with the board and her finance team, they were, they got what they needed to move forward.
Cynthia, you mentioned being over at the county council, I think, in your opening comment. How do you, how do you feel about the relationship between the council and the board?
They seem to have a positive relationship, you know? I, I've heard at, at the school board meetings, I've heard Dr. Pepe Kahi mention that several times, gratitude for the council working with them. So it seems like it's a positive working relationship.
Ann, how about you?
Yes, I would agree, it's a positive relationship. I know when I first started out, when the kids were little, and, you know, you hear all this stuff, the county council won't give money, they won't give money. So I, I said, why won't they give the school board money? And then I, you know, you learn more, and it's, it's like, okay, what are we doing with the money that they are giving us? You know, how are we allocating that? And, and I think, and it's a working relationship. I think there, you know, different people in now, and so it's, I would say it's positive.
And Candace?
And so I would agree with that. So as an incumbent candidate, you know, I've been working on this for four years. Um, and so I would say the relationship with county council has definitely um grown in a very positive way. I think that Dr. Pepe Kahi has, has, I would say, figured out the matrix of communication and the information that they need in order to make the decisions, the very crucial decisions that they have to make. And so I feel like we have been good stewards of our financials. And so as a result of that, I feel like the county council supports the, the growth and the, the way forward. So I feel like the relationship has been positive and it's, it's gotten better for sure.
Great. Let's talk a little bit about um students, although we, we've talked some about it. And Anna, maybe I'll start with you, because you've talked about your, your kids. How do we, how do we better engage young people um in, in their educational process? And are we doing a good job of that in the schools here today? Anna?
Um, how do we better engage young people? That is the question. Actually, for one thing, um, I, I feel like it's such a difficult thing to do because of all this extra, right? Social media and everything coming in at them. And it's almost like the teachers have to be entertainers in the classroom. So I, I would like to actually speak on the um, the cell phone issue right here. And this is what I just read earlier today. Nationally, last May, the U.S. Surgeon General issued an advisory about the effects of social media and the impact it has on youth mental health. And this is quote, Surgeon General. "There are ample indicators that social media can pose a risk of harm to the mental health and well-being of children and adolescents." And so I know, we all know this, you know, sometimes we plug our ears, we don't want to. to, because it's a nice convenient tool. But the social media is nearly universal, where 95% of our young kids aged 13 to 17 are using some kind of platform. And a third of those students are using it constantly. So we know that, okay, that's a whole nother topic, I probably won't, shouldn't go down that rabbit hole. But how are we engaging our students? I say, get rid of the cellphones, they don't need those in school. And I would, you know, I would say, it's like, it's my whole platform, going back to the basics. Are we reading? You know, are we reading books? Are books coming home, like big books to read and contemplate and write about? I don't see that as much. You know, I feel like, you know, accountability with their reading and their math. You know, I, I say the, the computers are a tool, a great tool, but I don't think they should be used so much. I think the kids need to be able to think and process on their own and writing out, and then the computer can be used later. So that's...
Oh, good. Candace, you're, you're out there in those classrooms. How do you hold their attention and engage them?
I was just at Easton Elementary and Easton High School today in the classroom. And I don't have an issue engaging with students. And I see our teachers engaging with students in a way that resonates with them. And so I think a carte blanche kind of standard when it comes to engaging students won't work. I think that we are teaching the whole student, and it's going to require a holistic approach to communicate with students. Do I think that cellphones are probably the vein of our existence? Probably so, but all of us have that as an experience. Often, we're at work and we're on our cellphones when we should probably be working, right? And so I think the control over the cellphone is one element. Part of that is going to start at home. What is your parent going to allow you to do as far as your cellphone goes in, in the classroom? I think there are innovative ways and strategies to deal with that. I think classroom management is a priority, should be a priority, will continue to be a priority. I think that learning students is where you bond with them, and that's how you engage with them. No two students are going to want to be engaged with in the same way as, as all of us. Like, we're not going to engage with everyone in the same way. So I think being very intentional about the time we're spending with students, what we're investing in students, and how they want to engage. The whole antique of treat people how they want to be treated, that's an antiquated concept. You should treat people how they want to be treated, because we all deserve to speak on how we want to be treated and communicated with.
Thank you. Anna, I saw you nodding. Are you in agreement with Candace?
The definite thing that I know is that when teachers build relationships with kids, kids will do for them. I just have to give a little bit of an example. So state testing is nerve wracking for everybody. And I remember this one lesson I taught, we were doing constructions, and the biggest smile I got on my face, even though I couldn't say anything, I had a kid being like, so I'm like, okay, what's your question? And he's pointing to this because he was so proud that he was able to, I think it was like constructing like similar circles or something like that. But relationship, relationship, relationship. I think our kids need that. I think our kids need hands-on. I think differentiated instruction is really important, and our teachers get professional development on that, because not every student is going to enter into a lesson at the same place. So, and then kids also need different opportunities to show what they know. Everybody isn't going to be great with paper and pencil. Maybe you need a kid that needs to tell you what they've learned, or they need to tell you how to solve that problem. Also, I agree with the cellphones. In the current district that I work in, we're piloting the cellphone pouches. And you can see engagement going through the roof. I know that's one of the things that we have been talking about as a board, is, you know, doing the pouches, because the kids don't need to be tied to this. And I also think the other thing that we look at is, how do we use technology in a classroom? A computer isn't a replacement, right? A computer should be a tool. And then how do we use that effectively to keep our kids engaged instead of just, oh, I'm just typing, but how am I using that for information? So the relationship, differentiated instruction, those are just pieces that we can continue to do to keep our kids engaged in classroom instruction.
Thanks. I want to shift a little bit, and I'll, Cynthia, I'll come to you first, but you've, you've hit upon a point that I've, you know, is very interesting and just feels right to me, and that is you have to engage the student kind of where, where they're at. So I wonder, and that's as a teacher. So moving to the school board perspective, I wonder how you would approach the questions that will inevitably come to the school board about what are the appropriate books in school? What are the, what's the appropriate curriculum? What's the, what's the appropriate historical background of this community or of the nation? What do we want to share with young people? And I, you know what those issues are, I know, but what I'm really interested in is, as, as somebody who deliberates on the school board, not as just a teacher, not as, as a parent, but as a school board member, how would you seek to address what goes on in that classroom with respect to curriculum?
I think really that transparency is the key. You know, I think that transparency builds trust. I think that what the school board has done currently and their current policy of how they look at a new curriculum is, is commendable. There may be other ways to tweak it further, but what they do is that they have a group within the school to review curriculum, professional educators to find curriculum that, that meets the needs of the academic objectives. And when they complete that process, they put it out for public review, for a comment period. And so I think that sort of transparency is, is very helpful, if people are aware that they do have a voice. And I think that piece is very important. When it comes to books, you know, I think that, I'm not a book banner, I, I think that we have, most of all, we really want our kids to read. I would like that to be the top priority. We do have professional librarians who provide books. And at the same time, you know, I also can appreciate parents' desires to, to share their own values with their children. So I don't want to see books banned so that one, one individual doesn't like a book and then it's banned for all of the rest of people. I don't, I don't think that's appropriate. But I think that the school system is always willing to take, take input and information, and it should be that way.
Thanks. Let's go down the line. Anna?
So as far as like curriculum, so in the state of Maryland, we use the Maryland College and Career Ready Standards. So that, that is pretty much set. And like Cynthia just stated, when it comes to purchasing the resources to make sure that we are teaching and implementing the curriculum, then that is a process, right? And in that process, as Cynthia stated, it is an open opportunity for people to take a look at the resources. It's usually, I think we have it at the public library, it's in the board office, it is publicly posted and always open for comment. I agree, I, I'm not in agreement with banning books, but I also believe that appropriate books at appropriate grade levels is also important. And if at any point in time, somebody feels like, oh, well, this book may not be appropriate, then let's have a process, let's talk about it, let's, let's put it out there, let's review it, let's have an open discussion and dialogue about that. But not, not to ban, and all history is important. We do groups of people injustices when we don't want, we only want to teach this sort of history. No, it, it's the entire history. We have a very rich area here on the eastern shore, and our children deserve to know the full history.
Anna, your thoughts on books and curriculum?
What she said. I, yeah, as far as curriculum, I know there is a, the teachers or the board gets together on what curriculum. I know at St. Michael's, one of the teachers is piloting a new literacy reading program. And she said it was wonderful, and she said she was able to reach all students, so that was amazing. So I think for more programs like that, where you have the teachers, I think it should be the teachers collaborating, and then they bring it to the board. What, what would we like? You know, I don't know how much say the teachers have in that, but I think that would be phenomenal. And history, yes, all history. The kids need to learn all of history. We learn all of history so we can change and do better. It's, we have to know what our history is to move forward. So I, I think our, our schools should be full of books. I mean, we should all be reading, our libraries should be full of books, and we should have a list. Every school, I think, does have a list of what books are in the library. So, you know, if somebody does have a question about a certain book, they can just go to that list and check it. And then if they have a problem, hey, I don't like this book, okay, bring it to the table, what is it, what don't you like? And have a discussion about it, and go from there. It's, I feel like it's not, it's, it's common sense.
Thank you. Candace?
So I, I agree with most of that. I definitely agree that teachers should be involved, and they are involved, in curricular instruction and development. I think it's a group of stakeholders conventionally that are looking at what curriculums are meeting our standards, but are the ones that our teachers are interested in and want to, want to utilize. I think when it comes to books, I believe, you know, in the opportunity to seek information, right? So I believe in the concept of lifelong learning. We should always be learning, we should always be grasping new concepts and thinking about how things change. So I want our students to have that opportunity. I do believe in age-appropriate books and things of that nature, so I think that, that's a good way to kind of move forward. But I also think that we should be given the opportunity to explore things. We're not, and I'm saying we as in Talbot County Public Schools and Board of Education, are not in the business of teaching students what we want to teach them. We should be in the business of teaching students the actual factual information that they're going to need to learn to, to come out in this world and, and be, be successful. So...
Thanks. I am, I've got a couple more questions, but I'm not going to filibuster. We have a microphone right over here, and if you have a question or two, no, no speeches please, but a question or two please, come there. And we also have people who are watching who may have a question, but let me hit just two more, and then we'll, then we'll go to the audience. Cynthia, you mentioned mental health. And all too often, we see news reports of young people who have very serious behavioral or emotional issues at school. What, what more should we do or can we do to help those here in Talbot County who do face psychological or behavioral or, you know, behavioral challenges?
I think, I think we can look at that from, from, from two prongs. One is, is building. You know, when you think about ACEs and trauma and people who've been through particular situations, ACEs, adverse childhood experiences, and then you also look at lists of resiliency. So how do you build that resiliency into students who, who maybe have experienced trauma as one type of mental health issue? A piece of that is positive relationships. So I've heard a lot of talk about that here tonight, and I absolutely agree. I think that is a foundation to establish positive relationships. And I think that the, the school district is looking at that carefully. I think then there's, there's mental health care, you know, for when students are in crisis. I know they have, they've brought in more people and looked at more partnerships to be able to address mental health issues and crises as they arise. And I think that is a, a third piece that's very important.
Anna?
No, I just want to agree. I think the partnerships that we have with our mental health centers is extremely important in being able to connect our students with those providers. And I think our school counselors, our social workers, our PPWs, they do a great job of, of helping with those community partners and those connections to ensure that we're getting all of the services that our students need to be healthy and succeed. Because if we're not dealing with a whole healthy child, as Ms. Candace stated earlier, it's about the whole child. And mental health is a very important part of ensuring that they are ready to learn when they come into the classrooms.
Anna, what's your perspective on this?
So, yeah, we need, we definitely need the resources in the school, the counselors in every school, and I believe we do have those. I would also kind of like to say, because that, that is a big problem in our, in our society right now. We all hear it, we know it. So I just, I think when our kids walk through the school building, when they walk through the doors of that school building, you know, no matter what happens out the rest of their life, they have to know, okay, when I come into this building, this is how I'm going to behave. This is what is expected of me. And these need to be clear cut, and they need to be enforced, and they need to be celebrated. So the kids, we all know this, we, you know, we, we know that kids feel safe when there are rules. And when they break the rules, well, there's got to be some, you know, repercussion for that. So we need to be consistent in all of that, all the way through. And then if you have, you know, the special needs, if you have, then the, the special, you know, resources that we need to give the children, then we need to have those in place in the schools. And I believe that we, we do have, like I said before, we do have the counselors, and I mean, maybe we need to hire more. I don't, I would have to delve more into that.
Candace, somebody said to me recently that, you know, in any community, and we have a very diverse community, people come to school with all kinds of issues that they face. And that oftentimes, the teacher can say, that's a person that's in trouble. And, and yet, the healthcare profession may not be able to address that person. I guess, I guess what I want to ask you is, again, from the front line, how do, when you assess that somebody has an issue, what happens next? How do you, how do you deal with that? How do you help that young person find the help that they need?
So it's definitely a multi-tiered approach. You know, it isn't a one, kind of one-stop-shop kind of situation. While, of course, you know, it's the expectation that you are following the rules and doing all of those things. If you haven't eaten in 24 hours, if you don't know where you're going to sleep at night, if you don't know where you're going to go when you get out of school, if on the weekends, you don't know where you're going to get a meal from, it's going to be very difficult for you to be a productive, helpful individual in that space. And so that's what I was talking about when I'm thinking about, we need to be teaching the whole student. I remember my grandmother bringing clothes to school for students when I was in school. Not going to tell you how old I am, but you know, that's been a while. I remember bringing food, bringing snacks, and we're still doing that. I'm in the office, I see, you know, students in principal's office eating their breakfast for, you know, eating meals at that point because they haven't had a meal from the night before. So I think addressing the holistic aspect of the student, that's what our job is. We will get to the goal, but we have to start with the foundation. And the public, public education is the foundation of our community. So we have to put those supports in place. In addition to our counselor, we have a number of relationships with community providers and stakeholders that provide additional supports to our students and their families, because that's another layer of supporting the student. If you can make sure that student is in a, in a rich holistic environment, then you can ensure almost that the student will do better in the academic environment. So it's important, now more than ever, that we are supporting students in a very holistic way.
You mentioned, thank you, very thoughtful. You mentioned, a couple of you did principals. I go back longer than any of you, so. Way, 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 a long time ago, a president looked, issued a report called The Nation at Risk, and it was on education. And one of the findings in that report was that what tended to make a huge difference in school after school after school was the principal. That, just there, that, the leadership from that individual, and I probably in Talbot County would add the superintendent, too, the leadership there moves, you know, moves through the whole organization. And I wonder, is that what you, those of you that teach and those of you that have been on the board, is that what you're finding in Talbot County? Anna?
Well, principals are so important because they set the tone for the building, and they have the very important job of keeping everyone in the building safe. And they're the instructional leader. So the, the principal sets the tone, they're doing the observations, they're doing the evaluations, they're connecting with parents, they're connecting with community members. So they, to me, the, the principal is, is the heart of the building, and they are so essential, and they're so important.
Thanks. Anybody else?
I agree, I agree with that. And I think just building that culture within the building, that's the principle. The principle is building what the cultural landscape of that school will look like, how people will communicate, how expectations will be delved out, how we will handle challenges... people will communicate, how expectations will be delved out, how we will handle challenges when they come, how we will communicate and involve and engage with parents and families, which is critical, right? So those are the people that are in charge of how that, how that's facilitated. So I feel like they are the heart and soul of the school.
You made my day.
Thanks.
We got it right in 1984 when they issued that report. Jess, you have a question from the online audience?
I do. I want to thank all the people who are watching online, and recognize that there will be people watching this live stream later, too. So if you're watching later, you can't ask a live question, but if you are watching now, you can. And here's one, like, this can just be a yes or no question. While everybody cannot vote for school board, every voter in Talbot County can vote on question A, which is a charter amendment allowing the extension of a temporary increase of one cent per $100,000 of assessed value for an additional seven years. I would ask, are you for or against the charter amendment?
Wait, can you repeat that?
It's question A on the ballot. It's connected to the Talbot County tax cap, and it is about whether or not you are for or against the charter amendment, which would allow for the extension of the temporary increase at one cent per $100,000 of assessed value for an additional seven years.
So without this passing, we revert back to the cap, is that correct?
That's my understanding.
That's my understanding. If you're not familiar with it, it's okay, but it's theoretically a way to get some additional resources. Anna, go to you. You, you nod, so I know you're going to, I can't be too far off track.
For me personally, I would say yes.
Okay.
I would say yes, for me personally.
I, I would have to look into it. I know everybody has a bad view of the tax cap, and I, so I need to.
Fair enough.
Yeah, I'd want to look at it further. It sounds to me, though, that they're talking about keeping things as they are for another seven years, rather than looking at an additional increase. And I think we know we do need the resources that we're, we're now receiving.
Okay. Yes, sir.
I've spent a lifetime in education, some of it teaching, some as an administrator in New Jersey. A number of years ago, Talbot County schools reduced plane geometry to a one semester The test results, I think, show that Talbot County tends to be below the average in the state on geometry. My belief about mathematics is that it is not about handing a number to the teacher and the teacher saying yes or no. We need to be taught logical thinking and look for patterns, and geometry does both of those. What is the role of you on the school board in helping make that decision of whether or not geometry should be a one semester or two semester course?
Anybody like to tackle that one? Has this been an issue before the school board recently, or?
I don't know about, can I just say something? As a parent, I was flabbergasted that geometry is a semester, chemistry is a semester, and I, you know, the sciences, and I, I got answers, but I just was never fully satisfied. So I don't know who, I would assume, I would assume it's a scheduling problem, or, I don't know, but I, it's, it's not, I don't, I don't, I would like to see it more. So I, and if I were in office, I would like to really investigate those kinds of matters, especially math, where we, we do see our scores so low. I mean, what is the reason?
So, so as board members, we don't decide how many semesters are involved in a curriculum as a board member. However, we do, we are involved in the adoption of curriculum. So we would be looking at it from that angle, but we wouldn't, that part of it would be managed by the superintendent. But those are questions that come all the time, and so those are questions that we ask of the superintendent, why that decision was made. And so that's something that we can do, and we do, when it comes to those types of curricular matters.
And I would just want to add on, I, I do agree, geometry is so important, and it's one of those things that you need it for trigonometry, right? When you start looking at sine, cosine, tangent, and you're looking at right triangles. But I will say, it is one of the tests that we don't necessarily have to administer for MCAP. It's Algebra I, and then behind that, I know my son just got his Algebra II MCAP scores. So, but that is definitely something that you can review and talk about. Do we need more time? And I think our curriculum supervisors do a really good job of assessing when we look at our students' grades, and we look at test scores, and we look at the impact of, you know, prior math courses and how they're going to have an impact on future math courses, that that is a discussion that we sit down and have.
Cynthia, point of view on this one?
Yeah, I think that echoing what I've heard earlier, in fact, geometry was my favorite math. But, yeah, I mean, you know, different brains are engaged by different types of math, so I, I, but what I would say is that the school board, it, yes, its roles are limited, and the superintendent has certain roles, but it's that piece of what is your role, but then what is their agency? What do you, as a school board member, have agency to potentially bring up and address? So these are areas, I think, when we are looking to have rigorous curriculum and looking to have true excellence in our schools, these are things that can be addressed.
I should also add, just the, the responses in the Spies survey also ask, you know, for more, more curriculum that prepares people for the trades, and not everybody's going to go on to college. What more can you do there? Others ask, what about art and music and things that many of us experienced early on that maybe are not as prevalent? I do know the school partners with places like the Academy Art Museum and others, so that the students get this experience. But just, I just, I throw that out because it came up with a number of people, a number of people's minds. Let's go back to the audience.
Hi, I want to be respectful of the people behind me, so I want to ask, can I ask two questions?
You got it. Two short ones.
Okay, yes. I've heard rumblings, and I think this is a national issue, but I know there's a new health curriculum. Have you read it, and what are your feelings about it?
You want to ask the second one?
And dress code. As a TCPS alum, I had my own battles with dress coding in high, middle and high school that have traumatized me a little bit, but, so I would like to hear your opinions on dress code.
Okay, health and dress code. No takers? Anne?
Well, what was, the health, could you expand on that? I don't know.
I believe there's a new health curriculum in the schools, and have you read it, and what are your feelings on it?
I haven't read it.
Anybody seen it?
I've seen it.
Anna, you want to comment on it, or can you, you want to?
I, I would just have to say, in full transparency, I have not looked at the new health curriculum.
Okay. Well, let's move on to dress code. Anne touched on it earlier, I think, but.
Did I, did I? I, well, as we talk about the whole person.
Yeah.
You know, how, what, what do we want to, what do we want to teach our children when they come in, starting in pre-K three? You know, I've said this before, like, how do you walk in the building? How do we walk? How do you greet one another? How do we clean up after ourselves? How do we address adults? You know, these are all things that we're teaching our children, right? And I mean, it's part of like the virtue. There's courage, there's justice, there's temperance, there's wisdom. Like, I think all these great things that we want for our kids, and it's, it's the whole person. So how you dress, that's the whole person. How do you present yourself when you go into your learning day? How do teach, how do people go into their professional workday? They don't just wear whatever they want. They don't wear what they slept in. You know, they present themselves in a way, dressed for the job you want, not the one you have. So I think this absolutely needs to be addressed and enforced. And I was so excited yesterday, because I went into the high school, and a kid came in, if I had a hood, I would do this hoodie, like this, you know, and, and he, he didn't address anyone, he didn't say hello, and he kind of walked in the office and walked out. And I said, is anyone to say anything about his hood? And, and the, the administrator did say something like, take your hood off. And I said, oh my gosh, I'm so happy you said that. And she said, I say that every day. I say that so many times a day. So I just want to give our administrators and our teachers, they have so much to deal with, so much. And, and it's just, that's part of their job. I know that's what they signed up for, but that's my thought on that.
No, it's a good, it's a good point. But Candace, I want to come to you, because you talked about meeting these young people where they're at, and sort of self-expression. I always took the position, you know, I'm glad people don't all think like me, it'd be very boring. But the fact is, they're all different, and they come with different styles, and I just wonder what, what can be done? How, how narrow or how wide should those parameters be?
So, in my opinion, they, they don't need to be super wide, right? We want people to come to school presentable. However, I think the dress code leans too heavily into individuals who identify as female. You know, there are ways to dress appropriately for everyone, right? So I think that we should be thinking about it from that scope. I, for one, think that the way that students dress is the way that they express themselves to a certain degree. You know, I think, you know, private body parts need to be covered, but at the same time, I understand that not everybody has everything, and so I think we have to consider that as well. But I do feel like students should be able to express themselves through their clothes or through, you know, their hair or whatever they want to do. But they should be taught professional dress. You know, you should understand that the way that you're going to school in the seventh grade isn't the way that you're going to go to, go to work when you're 40, right? So I think you're learning that skill, but, you know, I too am a person who had quite a fun adventure with dress code in high school, and how much I could push the limit. That's what students are doing now, that's what they've done always, and I think we just need to keep those parameters in place, but just make sure that we're doing it in a very equitable, fair way, so that teachers aren't spending all of their time policing how students are dressed. And just the healthcare question, curriculum, I am familiar with it. Do you have a specific question about it, or just you want to know what my thoughts are about it generally?
I guess just what I've seen across the state is people are worried that inappropriate material is being taught at different grade levels. I've read it, and to be transparent, I haven't seen what they're talking about.
Right.
So I guess that's what my question was.
Right. And so I think we've always had a standard around our sexual health and family planning curriculum. Parents have always had the ability to opt in and or opt out of that, and that's not going away with the healthcare curriculum. And the grade levels for which information is taught isn't changing, to my knowledge either. So, you know, I think my thoughts on it are, we need to continue to make sure that we are allowing students to navigate and explore what the world looks like at appropriate times. And I think that's, you know, that's probably the most complete I can be in that regard.
And, and just to piggy off that, anytime the health, there's been discussion on what they're learning in health, it's always come home in a page, in a format, this is what they're learning. Are you okay with this? If you want to opt your child out, that's okay. So I, I hope to continue to see that.
Thanks.
Good evening. I wanted to revisit the topic of conflict resolution and mediation. Does anyone have strong feelings about school resource officers, and if they are constructive presence between teachers, students, parents, and law enforcement?
So I don't mind starting that. So I'm at an elementary school right now, and we do have an SRO, and he does an amazing job connecting with kids, and kids feel safe. We just had a fire drill, and I will say it was not planned. A student did pull the fire drill, but we understand. And the most beautiful thing, coming back into the building, the kids are saying, thank you, officer, thank you, officer. And I think his presence just makes our students feel safe, and he does a great job of building relationships with kids, so he's not seen as, oh no, we have a police officer in the building. They're like, we have someone here that keeps us safe.
I think that continuing to develop those relationships with the SROs is a big part of their success in the school building. I think that helping to break down those disparities and barriers when it comes to law enforcement and, and different, you know, diverse backgrounds, I think those can, having SROs can help to aid that situation and what that communication looks like. So I think they can be used, and are being used, in a very productive way in our schools.
That's been my observation as well, that it seems like the, the particular officers who are going into the schools to be SROs, whether it's a combination of training or their, their own desire to be there, that they are connecting with kids in positive ways and, and have a, a positive presence and, and making the kids feel safe.
Yeah, and I say the more security you can have in the school, the better.
Thanks. Yes?
First, I want to say thank you for this evening. It's a relief to know that you four wonderful ladies are our choices. I have a four-year-old who's in pre-K and a eighth grader, and I just want to, I have two concerns. First, I want to address how much a mess our bus system is. My four-year-old has a different driver, an actual bus, almost every week, like, it's been so different. And last week, he, his bus driver hit a pole, and one of the kids was hurt, and he was scared, and he didn't, he didn't know what was happening. He just, he never knows, he's, likes consistency, and having a different person driving him every day is a concern for him. And also, guidance counselors. I, I grew up in a school where I regularly met, I think we all did, with our guidance counselors, just so we could have a check-in with someone that, because teachers have their hands full, and the guidance counselors are there to like check in with us and, you know, make sure that everything was okay. Is that something that I think could be more implemented regularly? Do you, I just want to get your thoughts on that.
Thank you. Is, is, are the school bus, the school bus system in the purview of the Board of Education?
I mean, they're under the county board, for sure, and there is a national bus driver shortage, for sure. And so we are constantly looking for bus drivers and looking for alternative ways. Just the idea, just seeing what goes into what's happening behind the scenes when it comes to the scheduling of buses and bus drivers, it, it takes, I couldn't even imagine what goes into it. I mean, it is, it is mind-blowing what it looks like to try to assess how to continue to meet that need. And I think we know it's an issue. I think that we're working with community colleges around the area to recruit, train, you know, think of alternate ways that we can utilize the resources we do have, the staffing we do have, in order to, to meet the needs of the community. But it is definitely an ongoing issue that we're consistently talking about and working on.
Same. How about the guidance counselor issue? Is that something that's a possibility in schools today?
So, like, one of my favorite things is to say when it comes to the school board is, I feel like the school board represents the people's voice, right? So you'll see a lot of us writing, like, especially, of course, me and Anna, because we're, we're currently in those roles, because we want to hear those things from people. So it might be things that we're not thinking of, or we haven't heard before, that we might want to consider. And I think, I agree. When I was in high school, the guidance counselor role was that person that you could go and check in with. And I know we have other folks in our schools now that we didn't have when I was in school. You know, there's more mental health support, there's case managers in school, there's a variety of other support measures in school, and I think we've kind of lent the guidance counselor to that being more of like the academic person, that person in charge of your academic programming, as opposed to that person that you, that you go to. And so whether the, whether, whether, how we utilize guidance counselors change or not, I think emphasis on who is your go-to person, who is your person in your space matters. And so I think that that's definitely something that we could, that we can address and work on and ask questions about, for sure. Thank you for that question.
Sure.
I, I think the counselors are so important, and especially middle, high school, and that's where I think we could work on retention, because we've had the same, you know, it just, it matters. It makes a difference with your child, and especially with the parent, because you know you can go to that counselor, hey, check up on him, I want a meeting with these teachers, and, and they, so, and for the high school, you want, you know, you want someone following your kid, who knows your kid. So by the time they're seniors and they're looking to go into the future, they kind of know the kid, what their strengths are. It's, it's a nice bonus. So, I mean, it's neither here nor there, I'm sorry, but it's, they're very important.
And if I can, I just want to add to that. One of the additions through Blueprint has been the career counselors or career coaches. So as we have students, you know, moving through middle school and high school, we have career coaches that help, like, with career we have career coaches that help like with career interests, like they do interest surveys and give kids opportunities, visit businesses. So students start getting an idea of, "Hey, I like this," or, "No, I might want to stay away from this career." And then getting them connected, one of the other beautiful things, I heard you mention career and technical education programs. And we also have the Maryland Youth Apprenticeship Program to help give our students experiences with our CTE programs that we may not have. We had a student in a county that I worked in and we don't have like a real estate program, but the Eastern Shore Title Company partnered with us and that student was able to get a job there. She earned high school credit, she earned a paycheck at minimum wage. And they also hired her and then they also paid for her to go to Chesapeake to continue her education. So having that check-in person, having all of those resources and making sure our kids understand what is available to them is essential.
That's great. You did remind me that I took a test when I was in high school that was supposed to direct me into a career that might be good for me. I was directed into physical therapy. Fortunately for those who have those needs, I didn't pursue it, but that was where I was directed. One more question, one more.
My question is, how are classes assembled? Are they done it, do they do it top section, middle section, lower section? Or is everybody thrown in all at once to the same class?
I can go to test that because that's been one of my things, the whole, the whole career with my children. They, all the kids are together, so they don't separate viability. I think that's kind of what you're asking? Yeah. So they don't separate viability. They, they're all grouped. And now, in the, in the middle school, now wait, they, so I want to talk on this Gifted and Talented Program, which I did initiate with the Talbot County Public Schools because they had nothing for your overachievers. There are so many resources for if you're underachieving, but there was nothing really for the overs. So we couldn't separate viability. That was not allowed. So we got the Gifted and Talented in. So there is a Gifted and Talented in the lower school, in the elementary. And they start that at first grade, I believe. Is that right? Okay. And then they go to seventh grade and then it kind of ends. So parents, I've heard some comments about parent, you know, some parents said, "Why can't they keep going?" So, so you're all together minus the Gifted and Talented. And that's, the Gifted and Talented is they take kids out. It's not like, it's not a full, you're not in there constantly. It's, they take them out for brief periods of time. So when you get into middle school, you are able, there's an advanced math. You can do that. So that's, you can get into that higher ed. And then they do offer Spanish. That's, I wouldn't say that's advanced, but it's a different, it's a, it's a, it's a plus. And then when you're in high school, so ninth grade, everybody is together for English. Okay, how many, how many, how many ELL learners do we have? You have, so you have a whole class of English, doesn't matter what level you're in, you're all English. That's English 10 too. You can't separate out of that English until English 11, when you're in AP. So you have to wait until 11th grade to get into an AP English class. There's not, there's no honors, there's no other way you can move up. And then the same with, now in 10th grade, you can start in AP Government. So that'll, you can separate up there. But up, you know, other than that, that's, that's how it's structured.
Thanks. Okay, one more?
I think we only have one more behind me as well, but this one is for online. Actually, I have two from online. I'm going to read them both, although they're very different. So you can choose your own adventure, okay? The first is from Jill. She's on Facebook and she has a really articulate question. She says, "The Maryland school districts are facing varying challenges from the rollout of Blueprint for Maryland's Future. As a board member, what are the greatest challenges facing the implementation in Talbot County? And what would you do to resolve them?" That's one. And the second one is from YouTube. It's from Smustard93. And they ask, I think it's a corollary to the question that was asked earlier about dress code. This just says, "Well, what about the kids who don't have the option of what they're actually wearing? Dress code seems sort of out of touch with kids in poverty. So if you want to speak to that, that would be your second choose-your-own-adventure." And then there's one more question after that.
Okay, let's take Blueprint first. I know it was referred to, but maybe not everybody knows what it is. So could I get a volunteer to just tell us what the blueprint is?
I'll just start quickly. It's, the Blueprint is, there are five pillars for the Blueprint for Maryland's Future. And it was the result of several years of effort of many different stakeholders. It was called the Kerwin Commission. There were many different people who looked all over the world to see, "How do we move our education in Maryland forward?" The pillars are early childhood education, high quality and diverse teachers and leaders, college and career readiness, more resources for students to be successful, and governance and accountability. So it was a massive and ambitious effort and it really does contain many laudable goals. The two biggest problems I see are that it is something of a one-size-fits-all plan. So we are a small district and that, that can be challenging for us. The second piece, of course, is funding, you know, and, and funding at the state level and how funding at the state level will, will play out over the next couple of years and funding locally as well. So it may be that at a point, we have to be able to prioritize and look at the timetables. So those are, those are the pieces I see. I think that we need to take a closer look also at the state formulas that are within the Blueprint. That is very, very challenging for Talbot County and how that is applied to us. But there may be ways to look at that and optimize a funding formula that we have not yet considered.
And for those of you on the board, have you begun addressing this already?
Yes, so we, we definitely have, you know, we've been, we've been on Blueprint for the last, what, three-plus years, Blueprint, Blueprint? And so, yes, I agree with all of those challenges. And then I would say kind of, you know, going down more to the granular level to the funding aspect is, you know, starting salary of educators has increased or will increase over a period of time. But now we're talking about salary compression. We don't want to bring new teachers in at a higher salary than teachers that have been teaching for 25 years. So what are we going to do to fix our current formulas to make sure that we are paying teachers, our high-quality teachers and educators, paying them an appropriate wage to live? And so that's been a priority of our board and this board. All four years that I've been on the board, we have increased teacher pay and that's something that I'm proud of. I would love to just continue to do that, increase it more, to support, to support our educators. But definitely, all of those challenges are being addressed and things that we're, we're thinking about as we're rolling out Blueprint.
And one, one thing, I mean, the initiatives in the Blueprint are spectacular. We all want everything in that Blueprint, but it's the funding. So my only concern is that, and you might be able to speak to this, that it takes the control out of their locally-elected school boards because it's state-mandated and it puts them in the hands of these unelected bureaucrats that you guys did not elect. So I, that's the only, I just, I don't, I would have to look more into that. I don't feel super comfortable with that.
Okay, come on up. We'll take one more question because we've reached our 90-minute mark. And then we're going to do a closing statement. We promised each of them a close, a two-minute close. And Cynthia, I'm going to start with you, but let's take one more question first.
Good evening and thank you for organizing and thank you for participating. TCPS student population, which is a topic that hasn't been addressed so far, is heavily represented by the immigrant community in our county. I myself, I'm a Central American immigrant. I recall from one of the reports from the previous superintendent that there were about 25 languages that are spoken at home in the households of TCPC students. I myself, I'm a parent of a student in the county. And I believe the county does a very good job of reaching out to, to meet the needs of that particular population that has its additional challenges. But also, I would like to hear your opinion on how the incumbents and those who are aspiring for that office, how do you plan to further or improve the services that the county offers to those students? And also, a concern that has arisen particularly in the, in the current political climate and after reading those glossy mailers that were distributed to all our mailboxes, that there might be interests and forces that are furthering anti-immigrant sentiments that might be bringing those sentiments to the board. And that's something that concerns me and I'm sure that concerns the, the community that is, again, heavily represented among the student body. Thank you.
Thank you. And that should concern all of us. What do you, what's your response? What's, what do you see happening? Anna?
Well, I wanted to speak to the funding. So with the Blueprint, the thing that's happening with the funding is that funding looks different for every single school. It's not a one-size-fits-all formula. And based on your student population dictates like the money. So for a school with a large, and in some districts, they say multilingual learners or English learners, that the school gets money based on that population to ensure that students have resources. But rest assured, the formula is to ensure that all students have access to their education. So that funding formula also includes our special ed population, our 504 population, but ensuring that. So that is one positive thing that the Blueprint does is make sure that we are funding what the school needs for their student populations.
We, we, actually, I would say, was it maybe three months ago was the presentation where we had the jars that were broken out and they all looked different based on school? That's the formula. I wish I could remember the date because of course, all of our meetings are livestreamed and out there for the public. I don't remember which meeting that was, but it was broken into that formula to kind of talk about how funding would be differentiated based on the needs of that particular school. And I think that Talbot County Public Schools has done a good job of continuing to provide support for our growing ELL students, multilingual students. And we will continue to do that. I think that we've just continued to make that more robust. I believe in immersive learning. I'm not, I know we, we were talking a little bit earlier about kind of everybody being grouped together. But I think that there's value in that for everyone. The workplace is full of people that we didn't always choose to be around, right? And so in order to understand the world, you have to be around all different types of people, all different learning styles, all different values. So I think that it, it's a learning experience for all parties involved.
You know, one of the things related to this is I'm always reminded when I get into some of these discussions about the diversity of Talbot County. And I think for a lot of people, they don't realize that. Do you have a range of how many multilingual students we have in our classrooms here in Talbot County now?
Well, I know that our, our elementary school is, I believe, at about 50% Hispanic students right now. So, you know, we've certainly, diversity itself has increased dramatically since I've been, you know, a student at Talbot County Public Schools. And I think that's a good thing. Again, the public school should look like, public education should look like the community around it. And so we should be evolving into what we need, what the community needs. That's the way our support, that's the way education, we should be providing that to the community. So I definitely think that supports in those areas have, have changed and have grown significantly over the years.
Thanks. Let's go to our final statement. Cynthia, we'll start with you. Two minutes to share whatever you'd like to share with the audience.
Thank you. Thank you all so much for being here tonight. Thank you to the Avalon, the Talbot Spy. Thank you for being our moderator here tonight. Thank you for this rich conversation that we've had here. You know, we have, we have an amazingly diverse community and our, our diversity is our strength. And if we can continue to work together to harness that, to share ideas, to support each other going forward, we have so much momentum, I think, for us to, to have our schools truly be excellent and truly create that foundation for our thriving community. I just wanted to let you know that I, as a school board member, and I'm the only school board candidate here from District 6 here tonight, but I would always be here to respond to your questions, to, to show up and to work with you. Whatever your point of view may be, I would always be willing to listen. I will always do my homework. I will work to help us come up with solutions that can potentially work for everyone. I am the one candidate in District 6 endorsed by the Talbot County Education Association. I, I bring a different background than, than some of our other board members up here, but I think that would contribute. I think when you have board members who come from different points of view, that can also contribute. And I also greatly respect the expertise of our current board members. So I thank you. I thank you and please feel, reach out, feel free to reach out at any time with any questions you may have.
Thank you. Anna?
Again, I want to echo the thank yous for everyone coming out, the Avalon and the Talbot Spy. And again, not to go back to talk about my background in education, but that is a set of experiences that I do bring to the table. And I hope I have the opportunity to continue as a board member to see some of the things. So some of the priorities that Dr. Pepe Kai has set out is, you know, making math a priority. And I want to continue to look at that, help to make sure that we're looking at our data, get some feedback on the resources that are being implemented in the classrooms with the teachers to see how that has had an impact on student learning. Continue to look at our local benchmarks, seeing how kids are growing. Are we seeing the growth that we're expecting? What do we need to do, making sure teachers are having collaborative conversations and are participating in their professional learning communities? Because teachers learn so much from each other. And ensuring that they have that environment to grow. Recruiting and retaining quality staff, that is another priority in our district to ensure that the teachers that we get here, that we're ensuring that they stay to have a continued positive impact. So I would say we have a strong plan to support and retain our current staff. And we have a strong and diverse Board of Education. And we're always putting students first because that's what we do, why we do. Students come first. And ensuring that we keep this momentum going, I, I'm so positive that the future of our students are strong. And as a board member, I will continue to support our teachers, our students, and parents. And I just look forward to continuing this endeavor. Thank you.
Thank you. Ann?
Thank you all again. And I just, in closing, I'd like to say, if I am able to earn your vote, I will work to make the decisions necessary to ensure that the taxpayer dollars are invested in classrooms and in the resources for our teachers so that they are able to do their job. I go back to my ABCs of advancing academics. I will work tirelessly to advance academics, to boost accountability. And that's accountability behaviorally and academically. And in, in support of our teachers, we need to give them the tools they need so they can teach and students can learn. And that's just, that's the support in the discipline area. I, I would say that if, if I am elected, if, if you, you do vote, I will go into the schools, into every single school. And if I don't talk to every single teacher, I will visit every department head and find out, "What are your concerns? What are your frustrations?" And I will have a conversation with them, five minutes, whatever they'll give me, and bring that back to the board to really dig down deep and figure this out, to really support our teachers. Because our teachers, they're, they're in the classroom, they're in there every day. So they need, we need to absolutely give them the tools necessary to, to produce the product, which is our, our children. And so I feel like that backing is absolutely necessary. I look forward to working closely and with transparency because I think truth is knowledge and we're not going to get anywhere if we are not truthful about what our, what our situation is. And we, when you have truth, then you can actually work on the problem. If we hide or conceal things, then we just, we don't get any better. So I look forward to growing and growing 1% better every day. So by the end of that year, you're 180% better. And, and we have to, like, with, with many other things. You start in pre-K 3 and you just move up consistently with discipline and prioritize academics.
Thank you very much. Candace?
So thank you once again to the Talbot Spy and Avalon for inviting us here this evening. Thank you to our viewers that are watching and everyone who, who came out this evening. As the incumbent candidate in District 2, I'm the only candidate that's also endorsed by the Talbot County Education Association. And I'm proud of that because teachers mean everything to me. I'm the product of educators. And so I want to make sure that we are doing our part to support teachers. And so I want to make sure that we are doing our part to support teachers, to support administrators, because they are the ones that are touching our students, and they're the ones that know what our students' challenges are and what they're facing day-to-day. So I want to provide psychological and physical safety to our students and our staff moving forward. I want to ensure those spaces and places for them. Also, you know, I'm a person who enjoys data personally, and I am very much about, "What are we doing?" I want to be able to tell our story. I always talk about Talbot County. I chose purple as my, as my campaign color, because of the two colors that it takes to make purple. And that is all about unity. It's all about taking people with different opinions and different versions of how things should go, and working together collaboratively for the better good. I think that student success is measured by many indicators, not just assessment scores. So we need to be celebrating all the accomplishments of our students, and know that academics is first, their success is first, but there are so many other ways that a student can be successful, and we want to be able to support what those things look like. We have been extremely transparent. I'm proud of the work that Dr. Pepe Caie has done. I remember several years ago saying that "It always sounds so good. We never talk about what those challenges are." I think now, more than ever, the reason why this information is even available, whether the context be accurate or not, whether that information be out there, that information is out there, because we have been transparent about what the challenges are. And now we want to be even more transparent about what the solutions are. I'm proud of the work that the board has done. I want to continue to do that work for not only the citizens in District Two, but in the community that raised me, the community that I grew up in, and that I will always give back to. So thank you for inviting me this evening.
Well, ladies and gentlemen, that brings to a conclusion our forum. I too want to thank the Avalon, I want to thank the Spy for this and the other forums they hold with people seeking office. I thank the audience who filled our room here, the online audience that has been active with us all night long, and also those who will watch this in its recorded version, and it will play in total at the Avalon and also at the Spy. Most of all, I want you to join me in thanking four people who have demonstrated they can take on They've demonstrated they can take on sensitive issues, challenging issues, speak about them candidly and constructively. I think we're very fortunate to have Candace, Ann, Anna, and Cynthia seeking these positions, and thank you very much, I wish you all well.
Thank you.